Welcome to the Guilford Board of Selectmen Candidates Debate. It's hosted by the League of Women Voters of the East Shore, representing Branford, North Branford, Guilford, and Madison, with members in some of the other area towns as well. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization whose members are men and women interested in increasing citizen participation at all levels of our government. We do not support or oppose any candidate for any office. I'm Jean Rabineau. I'm from the League of Women Voters of the Bridgeport area, and I'll be moderating this debate. Our format allows each candidate equal time to respond to questions and offers extra time for rebuttals on request in rotating order. The candidates are seated according to random draw, with the two candidates for first selectmen separated from the four candidates for selectmen. Each candidate will give a one-minute opening statement of their qualifications, beginning now with Mr. Hoy.
Thank you, Jean. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for conducting this debate, or discussion, as I prefer to call it. My name's Matt Hoy. I've been on the Board of Finance in Guilford for 26 years, 24 as chair. I think I've been at the center of a lot of the good decisions that have been made to make Guilford the community that it has become. I've had the benefit of working with very talented and committed individuals, whose primary purpose was to leave Guilford better than they found it. I bring to the table, obviously, experience. I bring to the table leadership. I have staked out leadership positions throughout my career as the chair, and I think that is reflected in a couple of recent incidents, particularly one with securing water for a couple of our neighborhoods. My management experience in the private sector, with over 35 years of management at all levels, including senior level, prepares me to take over what is effectively the chief executive officer role for the town of Guilford.
Thank you. Mr. McKenzie.
Hello, everybody. My name's Ken McKenzie, candidate for first selectmen in the November election. I'd like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and thanking all of you for tuning in to watch it. I grew up in Guilford and had a wonderful childhood, which is why my wife and I have chosen to return to Guilford to raise our two boys, both of whom attend the Guilford Public Schools, which we fully support. There are two primary issues, the reasons I'm running. One is affordability in town, and the other is transparency. Our elderly people are unable to remain in Guilford increasingly due to high costs of living. In addition, young people are unable to afford to move here. We have to address these issues. I've been very active in town issues for a number of years now, and I've seen a pattern wherein the town needs to do a better job of listening to and protecting the people most likely to be affected by the outcomes of the decision-making process. If elected, I intend to dramatically increase transparency, opening up avenues for unaffiliated voters to participate in the process, listening to all voters, and acting based on the wishes of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Federici.
Thank you, Jean. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event this afternoon. Now, more than ever, I believe that public service is an important responsibility and the opportunity to have a real impact on our local citizens. I and my wife Carrie have lived here since 1992. Our three children, Christopher, Robert, and Allison, grew up in town, went through the Guilford Public School Systems, and we really appreciate and strongly support that. I am looking forward to the opportunity to serve on the Board of Selectmen with Sandy Ruoff and first selectman Matt Hoy. This is a chance, more than ever, to tackle the challenges that our town faces, and I look forward to that opportunity in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Havardoff?
Good afternoon, and thank you, Jean and the League, for having this discussion today. I came to town in 1972, met my wife Marlene, who just recently retired as a second-grade schoolteacher up at Jones. I raised my boys here in town, educated them throughout the school system, and operated a business for over 25 years here in town. Presently, I am chairman of the Board of the Guilford Savings Bank. I'm on the Board of the Regional Water Authority and the Board of Managers of the YMCA. I am seeking reelection because I want to protect all of the work that we have done. For the past eight years, I have been on the Board of Selectmen. I think we are leaving the town in excellent shape, and I want to protect that. And there are a number of things going forward, which I think we have to finish. Thank you.
Ms. Ruoff.
Thank you, Jean. I'm Sandy Ruoff. I've been associated with Guilford and specifically the public libraries since 1977. As library director and town department head, I collegially worked with seven selectmen from both parties and countless Board of Finance members. During that time, I have brought differing opinions to consensus and found alternative funding in lean times. With appreciation of both time and money, I have always looked for the most economical method of implementing ideas and preserving important traditions. As a member of the Guilford community, I have served on many boards and commissions. I have always held out for open discussion and airing of facts before reaching conclusions. As a future member of the Board of Selectmen, I would be both responsive and responsible. I look forward to serving the residents of Guilford with diplomacy, inclusion, fair-mindedness, and, from time to time, I hope, a sense of humor. Thank you.
All right. The first and second question...
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Renner.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Hi, I'm Susan Renner. I believe I'm the selectman candidate who brings a unique perspective and set of skills. I'm proud to have served eight years on a Board of Education with an outstanding reputation for bipartisanship, collaboration, and great success. I'll bring that style, as well as my knowledge of Board of Ed, as we look for operational efficiencies. Professionally, I'm a CPA, the only accountant up here, and we have a certain analytical, financial approach that we're known for. As the treasurer of American Cruise Lines, with our national headquarters, training center, and about 80 folks here in town in Guilford, I bring insight into the needs of business as a local business, as we expand economic development. I'm the only lifelong resident who grew up here in Guilford and never left, which brings a unique flavor and context. Finally, every day, I take my best care of my family at home in answer to a full-time employer, because I need to work. In addition to three grown kids, I have one still at home, and also my mom. And among the candidates, I believe I'm uniquely in tune with the concerns of our families who seek to balance a way to enjoy affordable quality of life in Guilford.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. All right. The first two questions for response go to the two first selectmen candidates only. They will have a minute to answer and 30 seconds to rebut or extend their remarks if they wish to do so. We start again with Mr. Hoy. Please describe the most important contributions that you have made to Guilford thus far.
At the sake of being redundant, my opening remarks, I volunteered in this community for 26 years as a member of the Board of Finance, 24 as chair. Nineteen of those 24 years that I've been chairman, the voters have agreed with the budget referendums that we have put in front of them. I believe that I have a good feel for what this community expects for their tax dollars. I believe I have a good feeling for what people expect a community to be like. I have spent 24 of those years as chair, but I have had the pleasure of working with talented, capable, and committed individuals. My volunteerism goes beyond that. I coached Little League softball, Little League baseball, boys' and girls' basketball for over a dozen years. I participated in the Calvin Leake PTO activities for as long as I could. It seemed like it was a long time with three children going through the system. Volunteerism is at the core of my existence.
That's time. Mr. McKenzie.
Would you mind repeating the question?
No problem. Please describe the most important contributions you have made to Guilford thus far.
I believe I've made a number of important contributions to Guilford, Jean. I, too, have coached soccer, lacrosse, and baseball here in town. I've been very active in numerous town issues over the years, ranging from propane, where I kept it away from areas where I felt it didn't belong, to the Stonehouse Restaurant, where I fought unsuccessfully to see that it wasn't converted to office space, which was not allowed per our ordinances, to the Shoreline Greenway Trail, to the Tuttles Point Water Line, currently active in the Nut Plains Road. I've been very active. People now call me on numerous issues that go on in town. In addition, during my tenure on the Board of Finance for two years, I've demonstrated an ability, using my CFA and financial background, that we can reduce spending without cutting goods and services in town. Two years ago, my first year on the Board of Finance, we passed a budget for the first time in years wherein our tax increase was lower than the rate of inflation. I believe that I was the one who identified most, if not all, of the line items that ultimately came out of that budget.
Thank you. Any rebuttal or extension?
No.
All right. Anything further, Ms. McKenzie?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next question goes to Mr. McKenzie first. Have you contacted any state legislators to discuss municipal aid for Guilford? Please explain.
I have not contacted any state legislators to discuss municipal aid for Guilford. I think we have a huge mess in Hartford, and contacting one or two people while important is not going to solve the issue. We need both sides of the table to get together and work out a deal. The issues that we face at the state level are enormous. We're the only state who has not passed a budget. I can give you some economic statistics later on during our conversation, but we have to impress upon people that they have to sit down and negotiate, and we are not seeing that happen. And we have a governor who's been completely unresponsive to any negotiations that come out. So, that's the short answer.
Okay. Mr. Hoy.
The answer is yes. I am in regular contact with two of the three state representatives for Guilford, Sean Scanlon and Ted Kennedy. And I have watched, over the past several months, as they have continued to fight for Guilford with leadership in Hartford, to ensure that Guilford's share of state aid has been protected. I got a text as recently as Tuesday or Wednesday this week, while Sean was on his honeymoon, quite honestly, saying that they anticipate a vote next Wednesday, and the runs that he's seen for financial aid, financial support for Guilford, show that Guilford is in a good position. It was largely the result of conversations with Ted and Sean that I had proposed that the town of Guilford, in its annual budget, accommodate or estimate a million-dollar cut in state revenue, as opposed to what the governor had proposed, and as opposed to what some people said is, "Don't do anything. Don't anticipate any cuts."
All right. Anything further?
I'd like to extend. State aid is going to be cut. It may not be cut this year; it will be cut eventually. We've talked about this in budget hearings, year in and year out. If you go back and look through the minutes for the past 26 years, every year, we're faced with the same issue. We have to prepare for the point wherein there is no state aid. We rely on state aid too frequently. We use state aid at times unnecessarily, and we have to learn to live within our means.
Anything further, Mr. Hoy?
No. I'm going to pass.
All right. The next questions will be asked to all of the candidates in turn, starting with Mr. Federici. Again, it will be one minute per answer, 30 seconds for rebuttal or extension. The question is, what specific cost-saving initiatives would you propose to keep taxes at a minimum while still maintaining the quality of life and education in Guilford?
Thank you, Jean. I think the answer, the best answer to that question, is everything needs to be reviewed annually, as our budget is considered, particularly for the Board of Selectmen, to consider opportunities across the departments, make sure that the department heads provide clear and direct proposals for any increased spending, and opportunities for savings where they present themselves. To continue the path, as I have had the occasion to do as a 12-year member of the Board of Finance, to collaborate with the Board of Education early in their budget process to understand what their priorities are and where their opportunities for savings present themselves, and to take every opportunity to find savings where they are. There's very few single-bullet answers, and the answer is, take advantage of every opportunity that's there.
Mr. Havardoff?
To Lou's point, you know, there are very specific initiatives that we can look for, you know, throughout the budgeting process. I personally have been involved with negotiations with our bargaining units, and we are specifically in probably one of the most intense cost-saving situations, something that the Board of Education has already partaken of, and that's our health care costs for our employees. We're right in the midst of trying to hash out agreements with health savings plans for the major union on the town side. We've already accomplished, with all of the bargaining units, 401 pensions for all new coming, new hires. So that is probably the most specific thing that I personally have been working on and will continue to work on, because I think that while it won't have immediate, you know, remarkable effect, there will be a savings, but in the long term, it will be very important.
All right. I'm afraid that's time. Ms. Ruoff?
Having been on the receiving end of strict budget instructions for 40 years, I support the statement from my colleague, Mr. Federici. Zero-based budgeting is a reality. It's here to stay. We have to look at all of our line items every year and see where we can possibly get the best for the least. In the library operation, we've been very successful with public-private partnerships and funding. We have stepped up fundraising activities to augment our lean budgets, and I think that's something that can be carried forward in all of town government.
Ms. Renner?
I agree that we need to take a close look at everything that's been done, starting with the way all of the departments operate, similar to the work that was done several years ago with the Efficiency Task Force. Not being part of town government, I don't have a specific suggestion, other than, as Mr. Havard has said, to try to repeat what we've done on the Board of Education in terms of the high deductible health accounts.
Okay. Mr. Hoy?
The further we go with these questions, the more answers are going to start to sound similar. First off, as the chief executive officer of the town, it would be incumbent upon me to take a hard look at staffing levels and determine whether or not we are right-sized, and that is every department in town. I cannot sit here and tell you that I have a vision of how many folks should be at Public Works, how many employees we need to run youth and family services. However, as chief executive officer, it would be my job to learn and determine with the department heads and various commissions whether or not we are appropriately sized and staffed for today's burdens as well as future burdens. I agree with Charlie about looking at alternative health insurance plans. I believe the Board of Education implemented the HSA. Town needs to look at that as well. Lastly, we've just approved the SAFER grant. We have three years to take a look at whether or not that staffing model, as proposed through the SAFER grant, is the most effective for the town of Guilford.
Okay. Mr. McKenzie.
I'm sorry. Would you mind repeating the question again, please?
All right. This one is, what specific cost-saving initiatives would you propose to keep taxes at a minimum while still maintaining the quality of life and education in Guilford?
This question comes up a lot. The way I've focused on it in the two years I've been on the Board of Finance is to go through every single line item. I think a number of the statements that were just made are good ones. Contracts, the health plan, Matt's allusion to headcut reduction, which I haven't stated before, but neither has Matt, but it is something that should be on the table. In short, everything needs to be on the table. We need to talk about everything. Saying that we talk about it doesn't mean we espouse it or are going to do it. I ask a lot of difficult questions. I will continue to ask difficult questions. I will look through the budget with a fine-tooth comb. Anything is something that we need to talk about. It doesn't mean that we are going to do it or not going to do it, but the more questions we ask, difficult questions, the more answers we get, and the more answers we get, the more informed decision we can make. So everything is on the table, and I believe that we can make a number of easy cuts and reduce the budget to a point where people are more comfortable than they are now.
All right. Any rebuttal or extension?
I would like to make an extension.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. McKenzie's reference to a number of easy cuts actually does call to mind a statement he made at one of our recent budget hearings, where he suggested that there were, I think, $500,000 worth of cuts that could be made, but very few, very specific identifying cuts were actually espoused. He mentioned one or two things which may or may not have actually been practical, but for the most part, it was a broad statement that was not supported, at least at the meeting, by specifics. So I think the important thing, as Mr. McKenzie points out, is not to talk about cuts, but to actually have identifiable and practical opportunities to make those cuts.
All right. Anything further on this side? Anything further on this side? All right. Mr. Hoy first, Mr. McKenzie second.
I would echo Lou's sentiments. I think it is a false assumption to assume that the easy cuts haven't already been identified and made over the past several years, past several administrations. To do so is a fool's errand. That work has been done. The next level are the serious ones, the painful ones, the ones that are going to entail a significantly greater level of evaluation and determination as to the net impacts and whether or not our community is willing to accept those.
Time. Mr. McKenzie.
Yes. For two years now, I've talked about cuts. Two years ago, I identified over a million dollars in cuts. Lou, you can go back and look through the minutes. They're all on tape.
I have them.
Talking to, I won't go into the details, but they're all there on tape. I have made references to numerous other cuts, one being the reduction of the first selectman's salary, which I thought was too high and should be lowered to the town average if the 16 towns were compared with. I also thought the support of selectmen's salaries should be reduced to zero, because they don't put in, they put in the same amount of hours as planning and zoning in Board of Ed, who are not compensated.
All right. Thank you all. The next question is going to start with Mr. Havardoff. Do you see advantages to Guilford being a member of the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, CCM, the Connecticut Council of Small Towns, COST, or the Area's Regional Council of Governments? Could Guilford partner with other towns to bring operating costs down?
That's certainly two major different parts of that question. As far as the Council of Governments, and I know that Mr. Maz at first selectmen has attended regularly and has brought back information that I have used in negotiations with the bargaining units, and specifically in benefits and cost analysis and that type of thing. The second part of that question, I forgot what it was. I'm sorry.
I can reread it.
Just the second part.
All right. The second part is, could Guilford partner with other towns to bring operating costs down?
Well, there's no question. That's normally referred to as regionalism, and that opportunity certainly, you know, has to be explored. To Mr. McKenzie's point, you know, we have to ask the hard questions continuously, whether it was through the Task Force of 2010, where we sought to combine with other towns and, I'm going to call it the dog pound, but it's animal control, I guess, and, you know, obviously we have the transfer station, but any of those regional issues are...
I'm afraid that's time. Ms. Ruoff?
There are tremendous benefits from, with the town belonging to CCM and COST. One of the examples through CCM is that I know the town is able to broker better electricity rates by working through a third party that contracts with CCM to do such thing for the, to negotiate brokered costs in both indefinitely in electrical rates, which have a huge impact, I know, on the library's budget and on other town agencies. So that's a definite benefit for belonging to those regional organizations. In terms of, no, I forget the second part. Regionalism, right. We all talk about regionalism, and I'm from New York, where counties are strong and towns are more kind of combined to a county. I think it's often time for us to look at that again. Thank you.
Ms. Renner?
The first part of that question was about the benefit of belonging to those organizations. You can't answer that without knowing the cost. Everything is a cost-benefit analysis. I assume there is a cost to belonging in time, as well as in budgetary funds. So I'd need to know that, but unless we educate ourselves about the options that are available and about what other communities are doing, I mean, the best way to come up with great ideas, frankly, is to plagiarize what other people are doing. So I think there's probably a great deal of value to fully taking advantage of membership in those organizations. Regionalism, absolutely. Things that would have been distasteful to us, perhaps in a different reality a couple of years ago, because you do lose, you lose control and, you know, personal touch when you regionalize functions. We have to look at things now that we've really never taken seriously before.
Okay. Mr. Hoy?
I've had the pleasure of working with individuals at CCM over the years. I've used them to get comparative data on other municipalities, how they're spending their money relative to how we do. CCM is a, basically, a trade and lobbying organization that lobbies on our behalf up in Hartford, provides educational resources to us. I think, Lou, you've attended a couple of courses they've done, and also, they can provide significant data analysis tools and sets. The Regional Council of Government, our involvement with that is essential. If we are not part of that organization, we are not eligible to participate in several federal and state grant programs for the region. As to the second part of that question, which is regionalization opportunities, yes, there are. The one that has been the low-hanging fruit throughout the state for many, many years is Regional 911. It is, to me, it is somewhat unusual that 169 towns have their own regional dispatch centers.
Time, I'm afraid. Mr. McKenzie.
Yes, I'm a proponent of looking at any way we can save costs. I've suggested in multiple venues that we should talk with our neighboring towns. I'm sure we already do to some extent, but I think we need to try to have a little more granularity and narrow it down to actual hard numbers on what we may or may not be able to achieve with our neighboring towns. I am a member of CCM. I'm a registered member, and as Matt pointed out, they do have a tremendous database that contains lots of data and information, in addition to numerous articles, having to deal with the budget and the state crisis and local municipalities. So it is a wealth of resources, and anybody who's able to join, I would encourage you to do so. The regionalization issue is something that we need to spend a lot more time on, and I believe we can generate cost savings if we work together to do so, and we will need to do so.
Okay. Mr. Federici?
Yes. I have, as Matt has pointed out, I've had occasion to take advantage of some of the educational opportunities that are presented by CCM. I've been, on two separate occasions, attended seminars on government management and budgeting. I've attended a seminar on FOIA and Robert's Rules of Orders, all to make sure that our public meetings are open and an opportunity for every citizen to get the information that they deserve. Regional County, Regional Council of Government is also an occasion. I was going to mention the communication opportunity, which I think has been out there for quite some time and would be certainly something worth exploring, but regional economic development also makes some sense. Rather than having each individual town fight over possible, you know, employers and economic possibilities, to get together and to make it work on a regional basis could be something that benefits multiple towns at the same time, including Guilford. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. On this side, any rebuttal or extension? On this side?
Extension.
Yes, sir.
A number of people have commented on, there was a reference made to the Efficiency Task Force that came out with the recommendations. I would suggest that we've had a number of years to use, utilize, and act upon a number of suggestions that have taken place, and I think we need to do a better job. We're hearing it now, because we're all running for office about things that we would like to see done. There are a number of things that we talk about getting done that haven't gotten done, and I think we need to push some of these things forward.
Okay. All right. Next question starts with Ms. Ruoff, and it is, could Guilford do a better job of economic development, and what would be required?
I think Guilford is doing a good job of economic development right now. We have a part-time economic development coordinator based in Town Hall, and he has been out and about in the community, and I think there's a number of projects that have been started since those initiatives with that gentleman and his commission. I think that we need to all think about it a little bit more, and we always have that balance of trying to attract more businesses while keeping the town looking and feeling the way we all want it to do. So it's a question of, well, who do we want to attract, and how do we want it to look? And I just think we have to keep at it.
Ms. Renner?
Thank you. The most important way I believe that we can assist economic development is to keep Guilford on everyone's radar, as a great community to live in, as a great place to have your business, great employees. So the stronger we can keep Guilford as a vibrant community that people want to move to, I think that'll advance us very far.
Mr. Hoy?
I'm going to follow a little bit up on Sue. There's an old axiom in economic development that business follows people, and Guilford has become one of the destination communities in the state of Connecticut, without a doubt. The difference between our school enrollment drops and other communities is palpable. There's a reason for that. Real estate agents will tell you. People are looking to move to Guilford. When they look for the shoreline region, Guilford is the hotspot to be in. Economic development will follow those resources as they move into this community. Can we do a better job? Certainly, we could. We could provide Brian McGlone with an unlimited budget to go out and market and go across the country. Absolutely. But to a point Ken McKenzie made a couple of years ago... But to a point Ken McKenzie made a couple of years ago, we would need, I think you said, seven shopping centers, like the one we currently have, to make a noticeable impact in the split between residential and commercial property. Save for one thing, if we have some high-tech industry move in that we can, that has significant technology inside that we can tax.
That's time. Mr. McKenzie.
I think everybody's answered the question appropriately. Can we do a better job? It depends on how you define better job. If you're looking to have commercial development replace our reliance on residential property taxes, the answer is it's highly unlikely. So to everybody else's point, I concur that we need to be mindful of the character of the town because that is what's going to drive people to town. Ninety-three percent of our taxes come from residential property. Only 7% of that comes from commercial property. So we are heavily dependent on individuals' residences, and that will, we're not going to shift that needle materially. So I've always suggested that the ideal type of business to come to Guilford would be a corporate headquarters with a fancy expensive building that we could tax, that we produce high-paying, white-collar jobs that where people spent their money in town and moved into houses. We have a few pieces of property where that could happen. Ideally, it would have been the Rock pile four years ago, and I mentioned that in a similar debate four years ago. But it's unlikely. We have to maintain the character of the town. We're not going to change our dependence and reliance on property taxes.
It's time. Mr. Federici.
So many of the people on this panel have worked for many years to ensure stable budgeting, to support, strongly support our school districts, and as a consequence, we have a quality of life, as a number of people have pointed out, that is the envy of many towns across the state of Connecticut and throughout New England, in fact. We have excellent schools. These are the types of things that bring residents, want, residents who want to live here, and decision-makers in businesses likewise, to Matt's point. I think it's important for the purposes of selectmen and first selectmen candidates to ensure that certainty and predictability are at the top of the list for government. Uncertainty and erratic changes and some of the troubles, as many have pointed out here, that Hartford's been dealing with is not the type of circumstance we want to see visited in this town. I think to maintain our quality of life, we need to keep doing essentially what has been happening to this point.
Mr. Havardoff.
As past chairman of the Economic Development Commission here in town, I've fought this battle for many years, and I continue to talk to Brian continuously about it. To Susan's point about, you know, the healthier we can keep Guilford, the more vibrant we can keep Guilford, the more people are going to want to come here, whether with their businesses or with their homes. Another part, you know, economic development is such a multifaceted subject. To Ken's point, there would be an ideal situation where you could bring in a corporate headquarters and everything would be clean and wonderful and landscaped, but we also have to take care of our existing businesses. That is a very important part of economic development. In our community, we talk about quality of life. Well, it's also encouraging the existing businesses and people to come downtown or whatever parts of the town that businesses exist. We'll get back to that question, I'm sure.
Anything further on this side?
I'd like to add something, mostly because I think it's important for the future Board of Selectmen to hear this. Charles mentioned existing businesses. That's part of economic development, is keeping them happy. In my company, I'm part of the management team of American Cruise Lines, we find it surprisingly difficult to keep our workforce at the level that we'd like. And I think that affordable housing is an important part of keeping a good workforce in town to support the businesses that we have and hope to attract.
Anything further on this side?
Yes, I would also like to add that I think we have to be careful when we say our school enrollment is dropping. It has dropped from the past, but right now it's flat, and it is not declining to the rate of other surrounding towns. And that comes back to the point of why people are staying here and moving here.
Okay, anything further on this side?
No, thank you.
Anything on this side?
No.
Okay. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Renner first. How can we attract young people to move here and help older residents stay? There's a comment on this. Two affordable housing committees have been meeting for more than two years. Do you have any suggestions or ideas to help them move on?
One thing I've always loved about Guilford is that Guilford never struck me as a bedroom community, which Madison was, at least when I was growing up. Guilford is a very rich town because we have all kinds of people living here. Young people, it's tough. I have three kids in their twenties, and I can't imagine them wanting to or frankly being able to move to Guilford until it's time for them to raise their families. I think that, I just mentioned affordable housing, and that's a huge part of the issue for young people. When I was out knocking on doors with Mr. Havardoff, he brought up discussion of the zoning requirements in Guilford, which as someone who's not a participant in town government yet, I didn't know about that. But there are obstacles that are really preventing housing at the right pricing level from developing. In terms of our retired persons, I think that our senior tax program is outstanding. It's been the model for other towns. It was the model for Madison, and it's very important for us to keep that program strong.
Okay, Mr. Hoiberg.
Hi, Jean. Could I get a definition of young? Because it's changed for me, it's changed for me all the time. I mentioned a moment ago that the real estate agents are talking about Guilford being an attractive community, and I consider that crowd young. Those that I have, as Sue Renner has just talked about, those who are looking to start families, raise their children, and educate their children in the community like today. If we're talking about young twenty-somethings, this is a difficult community for them to... Plus, I'm not sure. I've had a couple of those. They don't want to stay here. Boston, Washington, St. John, they want to go somewhere else. But I think continuing to make the community the kind of community it is, as a, you know, have a real sense of community, plus the services we offer across the board. It's not just education, it's senior services, it's youth and family services, it's public safety, it's park and rec, so many opportunities for people. In terms of the senior folks, yes, I'm proud to have been a driving force in the creation of the senior tax program, and equally so, several years ago when there was insufficient funds in that, without hesitation, I led the charge to provide additional funding so that every applicant could receive their benefit.
Thank you. Mr. McKenzie.
Yes, 145 out of 169 towns in Connecticut have populations where 20% of the people live below the survival budget threshold, which is just under $71,000 for a family of $4,000, $22,000 for an individual. Thirty-eight percent of Connecticut houses fall below that threshold. In Guilford, that number is 24%. 24% of our people live below the sustainable survival budget level in town. Additionally, we have an aging population. Thirty-two percent of our voters are over age 65 in Guilford, up from 28% four years ago. The average age of voters in town is over 55 years old now. Knocking on doors, the one theme I hear consistently is that people, particularly elderly people, are not able to afford to live here. If you look at the migration pattern of what has happened in Guilford, 40- to 60-year-olds have left in waves in the past four years. People are getting older, and we've lost a lot of these 40- to 60-year-olds. We need to reduce our spending, which will enable them to be able to stay here.
I'm afraid that's time also. Mr. Federici.
I managed to get in the senior tax relief before the end of his, a lot of time, I thought that would fall to me, but I would certainly echo that. That's certainly one way that our, you know, a portion of our seniors can continue to live in the homes that they've lived in and supported the town in many ways. With regard to younger people, and frankly, people no longer with children, it seems to me village living is very desirable. Housing around the green is some of the most desirable property in our town. And what's one of the most noticeable characteristics of that is it's relatively dense compared to most suburban-type developments. And I think the opportunity to find increased density in other locations, not just around the green, is a way to increase some housing that has a lower price of entry for young families and for folks no longer have children in the house to stay on in town. So I would look for every opportunity to have such either cluster housing or village-style housing with walkability available.
Okay, and that's time. Mr. Havardoff.
I think Lou has really touched on something, and not only the younger people, but the senior people, me, keeping us in town because of the village concept. We were talking about, and it's kind of, you know, been on a back burner, but Town Center South where we were trying to develop some more housing down around the railroad station and everything, I think that should be reinvigorated. And truly, the village or neighborhood concept, I believe, is very important. I mean, we are all subject to the verities of the state, and I don't know if we're, what the situation is for just seniors or corporate mentality and that type of thing, but people, you know, do understand that Guilford is a good community, but it is an expensive community, and, you know, finding ways to make that more palatable obviously is very high on all of our radar.
Ms. Ruhoff.
I think we can all be proud that Guilford is already involved in thinking about affordable housing issues. I am serving currently as the chair of a town-appointed committee, Housing for Economic Development Plan, and the town received a grant to study areas where we could have greater density and mixed use to allow less expensive moderated apartment rents for people who would like to live here, who work here but cannot afford the current rents. The Guilford Interfaith Housing Authority has been reinvigorated. The Guilford Foundation has identified this as their most important initiative. So there are organizations, both public and private, very on top of this issue right now in Guilford, more so than in other towns. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any rebuttal or extension on this side?
No, thank you.
On this side?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
And I'm going to quote from the Community Foundation for Greater Heaven, actually the Guilford Community Report with the, which has some interesting data on it. Guilford residents have a much higher median household income than the state and region, with the average household earning $99,132 compared to $66,169 in Greater Heaven statewide, $70,000 statewide. Guilford residents are less likely to be cost-burdened, however, 14%, not 25% of the town's households are severely cost-burdened.
Mr. McKenzie, anything further?
Well, I'm sure his number, you can use data mining to get any number, but my number comes from the Connecticut Mirror and something called CoreFlex Numbers. It's 24% of Guilford households is what they say earn less than, so we can do some fact-checking on that one, but I think it's, we'll have to check the publications.
All right.
Either way, they're both too high.
Anything further on this side? All right. Next question goes back to Mr. Hoiberg first, and this one is, should Guilford institute a moratorium on all publicly funded projects and events except those necessary for safety of everyone or the minimal maintenance of infrastructure? This would mean allocating no more money for things we would simply like, such as Dogger Frisbee Parks, matching funds for state and federal-funded projects that are not roads, bridges, and schools, and also making events pay for their true costs themselves?
No.
That's your answer? I'm good with that. Mr. McKenzie.
There were a number of questions embedded in that. Would you mind reading them? Because I don't think I can say no to, or yes to, everything that's in that.
All right. Should Guilford institute a moratorium on all publicly funded projects and events except those necessary for the safety of everyone or the minimal maintenance of infrastructure? Then, comment, this would mean allocating no more money for things we would simply like, such as Dogger Frisbee Parks, matching funds for state or federal-funded projects, and also making events pay for their true costs themselves?
I agree with Matt. It's, no, it's too blanket a thing. Do I agree that we need to delineate between necessities and luxuries? Is a Frisbee Park a necessity, or is that a luxury? We don't know how much it costs. I think each item has to be weighed, given the benefit that it provides to the public, the number of people that are going to benefit from that service, how much that service costs, then we can talk about whether or not it is the sort of thing that we can do a pay-for-play type arrangement. There are a lot of angles from which you have to look at everything. So everything isn't always black and white, and again, it gets back to asking the relevant questions so that you can make as an informed a decision as possible.
Mr. Federici.
Yeah, the temptation to just say no to the overarching question of should an overall moratorium be implemented is irresistible. But, in fact, I think you do have to examine the different circumstances on a case-by-case basis, make an informed decision, use reasonable judgment to make the best decision for the citizens of the entire town. I think you need to consider short-term gain versus long-term cost. You need to consider special interest lobbying, if you will, for a particular activity or event versus the good of the entire community. So the more nuanced answer that I would like to end with is, it depends, and I would take the careful opportunity to consider each proposal on its merits.
Mr. Havardoff.
I, you know, obviously Lou and Ken have hit it on the head. You can't just say no to everything automatically, even though, you know, in these times right now, we are in the town side, you know, in a freeze. I think Sandy will probably speak to that as far as any capital projects and that type of thing. But the questions have to be asked. We can't stop living because of the condition of the state and keeping our town, you know, vibrant and healthy and moving forward. You know, we have to take the bigger picture. You can't say no immediately without asking the tough question, so I have to agree with you, Ken. That's the answer at this point.
Ms. Ruhoff.
I think the voters make a decision on moratoriums, and the voters decided that we needed a new high school. We also got a dog park. Most of that was funded by private funds. I believe the town provided some in-kind labor. So there are ways to take on public projects without just saying no to all public projects. To the capital plan in a freeze, that is a tragedy right now because of the state of the state budget. For the last eight years, we have had a wonderful plan for a capital plan that has benefited every town building, and I hate to see it in a freeze, although I understand the reason for it.
Ms. Renner.
Well, I completely agree with my colleagues who have said that the idea of a moratorium in which there is a black and white just is, that's not what we would be here for. Every proposal needs to be examined on its own merits. But I'd like to bring up the second part of that question. I wrote down my quote, is minimal, I'm sorry, minimal maintenance of infrastructure, which is something, I hope that we don't go there. It brings me back to the beginning of my eight years on the Board of Education, where we were in the habit every year of short-changing maintenance, keeping up the buildings because funds were needed for unexpected special education costs primarily. So where does the money come from? The upkeep of the buildings. And what a mess we got ourselves into, and perhaps that's part of the reason why we needed a new Guilford High School. So over the past eight years, where I've had the pleasure of serving as the chair of the Operations Committee, which is in charge of finance and facilities, we've kept us out of that position. Sustainability is a big buzzword, which to me means, you know, don't make stupid decisions now that future generations will have to pay for, and that's where you go with minimal maintenance of infrastructure.
Okay, and that is time also. Any rebuttal or extension on this side?
I'll take an extension.
Yes, sir.
You know, my snarky no was an emphatic no for the very reason that has been described by the other individuals at this table. That kind of thinking of, you know, blanket moratorium just doesn't work for every reason that's been expended here. But one more. The back half of that question was talking about analysis. We already do that. This is not, this is nothing new. We already make those decisions based on the information we have available to us, and we try to get as much information and as much input to make those decisions. So it's, that's a process that already exists and needs to be maintained.
Okay. Mr. McKenzie, anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay, anything on this side?
I'd like to extend.
Yes, sir.
One of the important divisions, departments of the town government is Park and Recreation. I think to, within limits and economically, that is a service that people have come to expect from a municipality, and I think Guilford does it very well. They have dedicated employees who work very hard to deliver an incredible range of services. One real specific example of budgeting that can get in the way of something, fireworks were cut out of the town budget many years ago as a result of a crisis. It's come back. The attendance has been fantastic, and I've got to believe that there's local spending and people from out of town also spending money as a consequence of coming to see that. Thank you.
That's time. Anything else on this side? All right, thank you. This is going to be the last question before closing. It will start with Mr. McKenzie. The typical referendum gets only 15% voter turnout. Should or could anything be done about this?
It would be really nice if we could attract more people to come to the polls. I am running on transparency, as you know. I believe we can do a better job of disseminating the message. I believe that we can do a better job of inviting the public to participate, particularly the unaffiliated voting block. They're our largest voting block, and yet they don't, we don't see any unaffiliates or independents sitting here at this dais here today. We need to work on doing that. If we can get the largest voting block to participate more in town through including them, they shouldn't have to go through the DTC or the RTC to get appointed to boards and commissions. So if elected, I would make the process wherein people are able to participate... the process wherein people are able to participate much more open, much more fluid, not based on partisanship. The people in North Guilford, I've indicated that I would hold meetings in North Guilford. The North Guilford people needed the safer services that they will be getting. They have been paying taxes for years and have not been getting the adequate protection they need and deserve, so that's a step in the right direction. So we can do a lot more to create more participation.
I'm afraid that's time. Mr. Federici?
Would you please repeat the question?
"Typical referendum gets only 15% voter turnout. Should or could anything be done about this?"
Well, this is going to bleed over into some of my closing comments, but I will say that interactive government means listening to our citizens and giving our citizens every opportunity to get information that we have available to us, to them, so that they can have an opportunity to make informed choices and frankly ask tough questions, which should be done and should be welcomed by anyone involved in government. So the referendum process is a cherished New England tradition. It's an opportunity to make sure that everyone keeps their feet to the fire who's involved in government. And as I say, giving the citizens the chance to participate and the opportunity to get information and to share information is very important, and I would work hard to make sure that opportunity is presented.
Mr. Havard?
There is no question that we should, you know, continuously work towards increased participation, you know, throughout government. As someone who, for years, served on many boards and commissions as an affiliated candidate, over the years I've been appointed to boards and commissions by both the RTC and the DTC, you know, recently, obviously, in, you know, for running for Board of Selectmen, I, you know, became a Republican. The issue about participation is extremely difficult because you have to not only, when things are running well, people tend to be complacent, you know, and you don't want to just have issues to get people out there. I think we have to start using social media. We've established the mass notification system here in town. We've been hesitant about using it for publicizing issues, but I think that's a direction we could go.
I'm afraid that's time also. Ms. Ruwa?
I find that one-on-one communication with people is the most effective, and that probably sounds impractical in a town of almost 23,000 people, but people don't have a strong understanding of our government. I've found that, our local government, I've found that recently in being involved with this campaign. And discussing how the town works and how things are either appointed or elected, a lot of people just don't give it a thought. As Charles said, if things are going well, they just go along. And I had somebody ask me, well, what does a selectman do? And so that took more than 15 seconds to answer. But anyway, I think the one-on-one is very effective combined with the, with all the other avenues that have been discussed already, including social media.
Ms. Renner?
The low voter turnout on a budget referendum astonishes me because that one vote that you have the opportunity to cast, that's what affects your life, your household on a daily basis. Will your child have 28 kids in the class or 18? Will your street get plowed in time for you to get to work? It's amazing to me that people don't turn out to vote for that, and I wonder why. Is it because people don't know how it works in Guilford? Well, for me, I grew up here, and it's like the little tree frogs cheeping in the spring. You know, you know that it's about the time to go vote. But people don't know that moving in. And sometimes I wonder if we are trying to fit a square peg into a round hole here with the way that we are running our budget process, in that perhaps now that we have almost 23,000 people, it's time to look at a different, a different way of doing this. Larger towns don't usually have the citizenry coming up developed on the budget every year. There are other ways of doing it, and I think at some point in the future, I predict that we'll be looking at a different way of passing our budget.
Mr. Hoy?
Charlie, your answer about complacency. I used to make a joke about one of the reasons the turnout was so low is that, you know, I'd like to think that it's because the voters think we're doing a good job. I'm not quite that naive or that stupid. But I think part of that complacency is exactly that, that people feel it is in good hands, and they have capable people making the decisions on their behalf. We need to engage citizens in a different fashion. This is 2017. There are a variety of electronic tools that we can use. We don't have a database of, an opt-in database of emails that people can be communicated with on a weekly, monthly, quarterly basis, however you want. You can opt in, you can opt out whenever you want. It's a tool to get information out to people and start to create some dialogue. In terms of people showing up to vote, it is everyone's responsibility to show up to vote, whether it's in a local election, whether it is for a budget referendum, or whether it is for a state, state election, or a presidential election. The example's set by folks like us who are on the inside, if you will, because it's important to us. We need to continue to push that out, and that people need to get out to the polls and vote, because it is the most significant thing you can do, vote for a referendum.
It's time. It's time. Is there any rebuttal or extension on this side? On this side? All right. At this point, we get to the closing statements. One minute, no rebuttal. And by the luck of the door, it starts with Mr. Federici.
Okay. Well, thank you once again, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and to everyone watching this program. We appreciate the opportunity to present our views as we run for this important election. I am an attorney. I have practice in Hampden, and I have an office here in Guilford as well. I have extensive practice in human resources and employment law, which I think would be a valuable experience and resource that I could bring to working on the Board of Selectmen. I have been involved in town government for many years. I was Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals in Guilford, and candidly, I loved that job. It was a volunteer position that gave me an opportunity to see many parts of the town and work with many citizens and other members of the town government. I've been the Rotary Board President last year, and I'm still involved in Rotary, and it's a great organization. And likewise, I get a chance to work with many groups throughout the town. I've been 12 years on the Board of Finance, working with Matt throughout that time, and I'm looking forward to the chance to work on the Board of Selectmen with Matt and Sandy in the future. And I would just finish with public participation, process, and using our best judgment whenever we can.
Thank you. Mr. Havard?
Yes. This election represents truly a generational and potentially a philosophical change here in town. And I want to bring the energy and enthusiasm that this campaign is generating, you know, not only with my colleagues up here at the table, but I want to see this being used to preserve and protect what we have established here in the community. Obviously, I'm running for reelection, and I'm very proud of what we've accomplished over the last eight years and what we, you know, how we have made this community a place that people do want to raise their families and keep it a healthy and vibrant community. But it is changing. I mean, there are forces outside of us that we can't control, that we are going to have to come up with some very, very sound and difficult decisions to maintain the vibrance that this community has. I don't have to get into today everything, you know, that we've accomplished over the past eight years, but I am proud of what we have accomplished and what we are leaving to the next Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Ms. Ruwa?
I would like to take my experience and talents as library director and just move them from 67 Park Street to 31 Park Street. I manage a budget of over $1 million. I work with the library board to manage a $2.5 million endowment for the library. Over the years, I too have served on many local boards as president and member, including the Guilford Arts Center, the Women and Family Life, the Guilford Chamber of Commerce, which is the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce, the Guilford Foundation. I'm still a member of Guilford Savings Bank. I'm a trustee and served with Charles, and the Guilford Rotary Club for 25 years. I still will be involved in legislative issues on a statewide basis with the library world as a member of the State Library Board. So I believe I have a lot of varied talents to bring to, to be a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I would be proud to serve. Thank you.
Ms. Renner?
Thank you. It's really been a pleasure to participate in this debate or discussion with each and every one of you, and I think the town is in good hands regardless of what happens in November. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, not so much for, on our behalf, but on behalf of the voters, because this forum gives the voters a chance to get a look at all of us and see how we interact with each other and how we, how we blend together. Because at the end of this, when all the election and campaign dust settles, we are going to have a five-member Board of Selectmen, led by one first selectman, and these are people who are going to have to hit the ground running and tackle some serious issues that are facing Guilford. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoy?
I'm proud to have had the opportunity to serve the town of Guilford for these last 26 years. Guilford's a great place. Financially, we're one of the best managed communities in the state. AAA bond rating, pensions funded at 85% to 90%, rainy day fund of $9 million, which will help us absorb anything that happens, that comes from the state. I am concerned about what's going on at the state, believe me. The model is changing. But we've weathered 20 years of declining state revenues. Had we been funded on the ECS at the same rate we were 20 years ago, we'd have another $5 million in state revenue coming into our coffers. We've managed through that process. We will manage through this one as well. The good news is, we have big investments behind us. Public safety, the high school, library expansion. We've made investments in this community over the years. I don't see those on the horizon. Guilford is in a good shape. It will be even better shape under my management, experience, and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie.
I'd like to thank the League of Women in Voters and you, particularly the audience, for watching this event. I believe I'm eminently qualified to serve as our next first selectman. Professionally, I have 25 years of financial experience. I'm a CFA charter holder, and I've used those skills during my tenure on the Board of Finance, where I've learned how the town runs and operates and how we spend our money. I believe that I've demonstrated the leadership skills that are necessary to managing this town going forward, not only through my actions in numerous town issues that have come up over the past six years, but most recently in the primary campaign that I waged in Juan. I put together a team of individuals for that campaign. We sent our message out, our team sent the message out to people. It resonated, and hence that's why I'm here today. I look forward to working as a team with all the elected officials, including everyone here at this board, all members of the town boards and commissions, and in particular, all of you people out there. We can all work together to make Guilford a better place for us and for future generations to come. I hope you will come to the polls on November 7th and choose me to be the leader of our wonderful team. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the East Shore, I want to thank all the candidates for participating in this debate, and I want to thank Guilford Community Television for recording and broadcasting this production. Further information on Guilford's candidates and election process may be found in recent issues of the Guilford Courier and on Shore Publishing's website at zip06.com. We trust that the voters will now be able to make an informed decision on November 7, when the polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We're asking all of you, in the audience and in the viewing audience, please come and vote. And if you have a friend who is registered, make sure he or she comes with you. And if you have a friend who is not yet registered but eligible, please make sure they register. There is still time. Thank you.